Order the meeting of the council for Monday, January 6, 2025. I would ask that you all please rise for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as the City Council commences its first meeting of 2025, we are just ever thankful for the many blessings that we have experienced over the last several years, and we just pray and ask for blessings to continue in our community. Batavia is a very fortunate city to have outstanding public safety people and an entire city staff that's very understanding and helpful, and we get very positive things said about the jobs that we do. So we just ask that this continue in a very positive trend, and we ask for blessings upon it. And also, we ask for blessings from all those in our community who are serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And then we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon each one of these men and women as they go about their vital missions. And as always, we ask for understanding and appreciation and decisions and debate by members of our City Council, so at the end of the meeting, they will have acted and done the very best things that could be done to make Batavia continuing to be a good city. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Who would like to do the Pledge of Allegiance? All of them, Lee?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The city clerk, to please call the roll.
Barazza?
Here.
Lancy?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Peiper?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Sulfah?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Ayazi absent.
Malley?
Here.
Uer? Serone?
Here.
Vocal singer?
Here.
Twelve present, two absent.
We have the necessary quorum to conduct business. Item four is my reminder to anyone who's going to address us tonight, if you are, that you would so recognize that you would come up and use the podium and use the microphone, because this is all being recorded on television, and if you don't use the mic, they can't hear what you're saying. So we ask that you all do that if you're going to speak. Moving to item number five on our agenda, items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. Do we have anything? I'm not aware of anything. All right. Moving then to item number six, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Beck, would you present this, please?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows: Except-in-place-on-file, the Committee of the Whole minutes for November 12th and November 26th, 2024; the Plan Commission minutes for November 20th, 2024; and the Historic Preservation Commission minutes for November 25th, 2024. And for approval, the December 20th, 2024 payroll in the amount of $1,109,622.66; the accounts payable check register in the amount of $7,523,581.48; the City Council minutes for December 16th, 2024; and for approval, the City Council Executive Session minutes for August 19th, September 3rd, September 16th, and October 7th, 2024; and Resolution 2025-1-R authorizing renewing a contract for the Association for Individual Development, AID, victim services for a full-time in-house social worker. Your Honor, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Motion second for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Kirk, please call the roll.
Beck?
Hi.
Peiper?
Hi.
Malone?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion approved. Okay, moving to item seven on our agenda, which is matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak to us tonight? Do you come up and use the podium? Give us your name, please.
My name is Al Gore. I talked to Kate before I got here. I have a handout I wanted to give you.
Thank you.
Last time I was here, I talked about, hey, you ought to implement a continuous improvement program. And I walked away from the meeting, I thought, you know what? I did that for over 30 years. I'm not here to ask you for anything, I just want to share with you some thoughts of what I did, and my goal is maybe you can incorporate it into what you're doing, because I know you got a hard job, you got a lot of demands on you. But what I'm sharing with you, I've used in large organizations, Motorola, Health Care, Cell Labs, managed large groups of people, hundreds of people. And so I think it's very simple, easy, and it's effective. And so some perceptions of continuous improvement, or misconceptions of, is that, you know, it costs a lot of money to put it in. Well, you can go get a consultant, but I never had that luxury over 30 years. What I want to share with you, you can use, literally, it's a turnkey, it's something you can effectively use right now. It requires additional headcount, you really don't need additional headcount, the idea is to incorporate it into what you're doing in the day-to-day operations of your people. It takes people away from their jobs, and you know, it's a culture thing. I mean, if you begin doing this and do it in a positive collaborative manner, people embrace it and they'll do it just as a matter of part of their jobs. And, you know, people, you think, well, you know, they don't want to do it. But I got to tell you, the spirit of the people today, particularly your millennials, your Gen X and your Gen Zs, they want a voice in what they're doing. And this gives you the opportunity to do that. So I was taught Six Sigma, and Six Sigma basically says that in 1 million events, you got three defects. And you'll say, wow, that's outrageous. I mean, how crazy is that? Well, if you ever got on an airplane, that's operating at a nine or 10 sigma. Whereas you look at your restaurant bill, that's maybe one or two sigma. I mean, there's so many errors there, it's not funny. I've gotten in the habit to check everything in my receipts, and you wouldn't believe all the errors that I had constantly. And it's not the people's fault, it's the process. And that's the whole spirit of continuous improvement, is that it's, you know, it's, people are good, they're doing a great job, but what you do is you say, hey, let's look collaborative what you're doing, and maybe we can do it faster, easier, more efficiently. So on the one sheet of paper that I gave you, this is something that we used at Motorola, and I called it the Interactive Change Machine. And that is, is it's interactive with an employee, individual, a region, a department, and it's not what you say, it's how you say it. And you say, hey, you're doing a great job, thank you for your efforts, but you know, we need to look at what we're doing and how we can save money, become more efficient, and I really appreciate your thoughts on how we can do that. And so this is a quad chart, it's a piece of paper with four boxes on it. On the left, you say, hey, where's an area of measurement? And with that said, what's our goal? And I have to tell you, hands down, I mean, you can measure your, so many different things, but I always, always, always focused on cycle time. How long does it take to do something? I had an $820 million project that I was operating for Cell Labs, I had six months to implement, and I used this one sheet of paper to help me do that, because it's all cycle time. It's, time is money. So you say, okay, what is, I'm going to measure over 12 months, what's my goal? And then you ask people, hey, give me your ideas on why you think we're not meeting that goal, and that's your inhibitors. And so then basically you identify the inhibitors and say, hey, what's your ideas for action plans? And again, you're interacting, it's collaborative, and then you say, hey, develop a plan, top one or two things, who's the owner, and what's the date you can have it done? And then you say, what's the impact of that based upon our operation? And then I want to provide it on the backside as an example of that. So you say, hey, a return, you know, at Motorola, we're repairing equipment, so you say, what's my turn time? So you say, you know, this is excellent repair service, I want quick turnaround time, our current performance is five days, we want to get it down to one day by the end of the year. So you start tracking your performance. When you don't meet your goal on a monthly basis, you say, hey, folks, why aren't we doing it? What are you feeling, seeing, measuring? And that's your paratoric chart. And then the other day, you say, okay, what's your action plan? Who's going to do, by what? To address the parts shortages, or the training, or whatever it might be. And then what's the impact, you know, in terms of what you're doing or what your action plan is. So effective, I just can't overemphasize the positive impact it has on employee morale, employee engagement. The millennials that I manage just took this, embraced it, and ran, because they really want to partake and be a part of the organization. You know, it's fun, you can go and reward off this when somebody meets their goal, you can really embrace it, have a celebration, get cake, I mean, you can have a lot of fun with this. It's easy, it's effective, and I used it through my career. And so I just walked away from last meeting, I thought, hey, I have a lot of experience with this, I wanted to share this with you and hope you can embrace it and use it in your operation here. And Laura, you got my email, hey, if anybody has any questions, comments, issues, feel free to reach out to me.
I guess what I'd like to suggest to you is, you know, this is a business meeting where we have items of business we have to take care of. So what we do have is twice a month, on the other, opposite Tuesdays, we have a committee meeting where the aldermen all come in and we sit down, and that's when the new ideas and the ideas such as you've just presented are discussed in great detail. So I'll make sure, I'd be happy to put you on the agenda for a coming committee meeting, and we'll get you on, and then you can make a more broader interpretative discussion with the council as to what they would like to do.
Happy to do that.
Okay?
Very cool.
Well, thank you for coming down.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, do we have anybody else in the audience? All right, well, tonight's a special night, we're moving to item number eight, and we have some presentation to do, because our very honorable Police Chief Sean Maza is retiring from the Batavia Police Department, and in a couple of days after 26 years of service, number of which he has been our chief, and he's done a tremendously positive, informative job for the community. And so I'd like to begin this, I'd like to present a proclamation, which I'm going to read, and ask for the council's approval of the proclamation. It says, whereas Police Chief Sean Maza began his exemplary career with the City of Batavia Police Department in January of 1999 as a patrol officer, and through dedication, perseverance, and outstanding leadership, he has risen to the rank of Police Chief in 2022. And whereas Chief Maza has led the City of Batavia Police Department with integrity, vision, and a steadfast commitment to fostering trust, transparency, and community engagements, overseeing a department of 43 sworn officers and 12 civilian employees. And whereas during his tenure, Chief Maza championed innovative and community-focused programs such as Coffee with a Cop, Cones with a Cop, and expansion of the bicycling panel patrol officer program, crime prevention presentations, and additions to the community-oriented police officer and comfort dog to serve the residents of Batavia. And whereas Chief Maza prioritized the adoption and integration of the 10 shared principles of foundational values developed by the NAACP Illinois State Conference and the Illinois State Chiefs of Police into the department's hiring, training, and daily practices, ensuring that the department remains committed to treating all people with dignity, fairness, and respect. And whereas, under Chief Maza's direction, the Police Department enhanced officer wellness initiatives, expanded leadership and partnerships to include a full-time social worker with crisis response, and participated in charitable events like Chip In the City, the Special Olympics, and embodied the spirit of community service throughout our entire town. And whereas Chief Maza has demonstrated unwavering dedication to officer training, professional development, and a team-oriented culture emphasizing the importance of trust, responsibility, and servant leadership in the law enforcement profession. And whereas through his remarkable 25-year career, Chief Maza has been recognized with numerous awards, including the Jason Colesley Memorial Brotherhood Award, Life Saving Awards, and Police Officer of the Year, as well as over 30 commendations for his exceptional service to the department and to the community. And whereas beyond his service to the City of Batavia, Chief Maza has exemplified a spirit of compassion and global citizenship through his humanitarian efforts, including leading mission trips to orphanages in Haiti and other service initiatives that he has participated in. And whereas Chief Maza's leadership has left an indelible mark on the City of Batavia, its Police Department, and its residents, setting a standard of excellence, dedication, and community partnership that will endure for years to come. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of the City of Batavia, do hereby proclaim January 14th, 2025, as Chief Sean Maza Day throughout the entire City of Batavia, in honor of the extraordinary service, leadership, and contributions to safety and the well-being of our community. On behalf of the City Council, the city staff, and the citizens of Batavia, we extend our deepest gratitude and heartfelt congratulations to Chief Maza on his well-earned retirement. May he spend the next chapter of his life filled with happiness, fulfillment, and continued opportunities to make a difference in our greater world. And this is signed by myself, but I would ask for a motion from the City Council to approve this proclamation. I move. Second.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sulfah?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Lehman?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vocal singer?
Aye.
Barazza?
Aye.
Lancy?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Peiper?
Aye.
Malone?
Aye.
Thirteen yes, no, no, one absent.
Motion's approved unanimously. Laura, you want to make some comments, would you?
Before we begin, I would just like to say what an honor it has been and a privilege to work with Sean, both in his many roles within the Police Department, but in particularly in his role as our Chief of Police. Sean has shown himself to be adept not only in the gravest of crisis situations, but also in his interactions just in every day with residents, with staff, with our elected officials, with our businesses, and his, he just instills a sense of trust and confidence, and it's because he is such a humble leader who leads with a servant's heart. I've never told him this before, but really, Sean, you've been a role model to me and others, and you'll truly be missed here in the City of Batavia.
Thank you.
I'm handing this over to Sean, in great appreciation on behalf of all the people of Batavia for an outstanding job that you've done, and I'd like to ask you to say a few words, if you would.
First off, all thanks and glory be to God. I just have an overwhelming sense of gratitude as I'm getting close here to the end, just been reflecting back on, you know, 26 years of being a police officer here in Batavia. I'm so grateful that in 1999, Mayor Shelkey at the time, and the City Council, the Board of Fire and Police Commission, gave me the opportunity to really live out my dream as being a police officer. It's something that I wanted to do since I was in eighth grade, so again, just this overwhelming sense of gratitude that I have. And wrote a few bullet points here, there's some people that I want to thank that are in the room, and hopefully I don't miss anybody. Really want to, you know, thank all of the past leaders and police officers that I've worked with over the years. These people are truly professionals, they're dedicated, loyal servants to the community. I also want to thank our record staff and our civilian employees. There are so many people, TRICOM, that operate behind the scenes, that just don't get the credit that they deserve. And 24/7, there are public safety personnel with the Police Department, the Fire Department, TRICOM, our record staff that are working to make Batavia such an amazing place to live and to be, to work in and be a part of. So thank you so much to all those folks. I also wanted to quickly just, you know, take a moment to recognize, again, all of our officers that do the job. Really, that's where the service takes place, and there are so many challenges, especially in the world that we live in today, that our officers face, that our public safety officials with the Fire Department face. And I can think of some recent calls that our officers have been on where just nothing but, you know, tragic circumstances, and what I want, and not to take anything away from those who are victims in those cases, but our officers, our fire, our police personnel, they also have to live through these experiences that are extremely traumatic. So I just wanted to take a second to recognize just the challenges and the difficulties of the job that our officers do and our fire guys do and gals every day. So I'm so grateful and thankful to them, they're the ones that are getting the work done out on the street, amazing people with amazing hearts. So I wanted to take a few minutes to thank the city staff. You know, I've really realized, probably over the past five to seven years being in police administration, how important it is for all of the different departments to come together and make the city function be as tremendous as it is. And so all the folks that are sitting at the table over here to my right are just amazing professionals, subject matter experts in their fields, and kudos and hats off to their departments, because I'm telling you, the people that work here are the reason why this community is so amazing. So, you know, thank you to all of you folks, it's been a real pleasure working with you over the past, you know, five to seven years more closely. So grateful and thankful for all of the partnerships that we've developed in the community, and friendships, too. There's so many people that I've met over the course of my 26 years who I'll forever be friends with, so I'm not going to be too far away, I plan on coming back this direction and still being in some form or fashion a part of the community. So wanted to thank Mayor Shelkey, wanted to thank the present City Council for, and Laura Newman as well, for giving me the opportunity to help, I guess, just be, you know, a small part of our department and what we do to, again, make the city such an amazing place. I wanted to thank, in the back row behind me is Joanne Miller, she's our administrative professional at the Police Department. Wow, I mean, could talk for an hour about Joanne and all the stuff that she does to help keep our department running. I talk about people that are doing work behind the scenes, that without them, we would be lost, and Joanne is one of those people, so. And then just wanted to also thank Eric Blowers, Mike Johnson, and Gary LaBarbera, who will be all getting promoted here tonight. All are capable, prepared, and ready to continue to lead the department. I have the utmost confidence and faith that this is truly just going to be a baton handoff, and they're going to, you know, keep going and running with what we're doing. So I'm excited for the department, excited for the city, I think that the future is bright, and really just wanted to leave you with, I was doing a devotion recently with my family, and this short paragraph kind of struck me and thought I would share it with everybody tonight. So in closing, we are all here on earth for far more than just to take up space, we all have unique tasks we are asked to do throughout our lives. This means that each of us, what each of us does matters, our lives all matter, we all have significance. I encourage each of us to not be self-occupied, instead notice others' needs and consider how you can love them. So again, I just want to take one last opportunity to thank all of our officers, some of which are back here today. Thank you all for making Batavia P such an amazing place. Thanks.
So as it's showing here on our agenda, we have a duty to perform, and that's to give an oath of office to the new Chief of Police. And we are so fortunate to have somebody right in line that's highly qualified to do this job, so I'm going to turn it over to the city administrator for a moment, and she is going to tell a little bit about the new chief that we are about to swear in.
As Mayor says, it makes us extremely proud when we can see one of our own who has come up through the ranks and is able to take on the new leadership of this department. And so I'm very proud for and of Eric Blowers. I'd like to tell you a little bit about Eric. He joined the Police Department in 2007, and he has served in a variety of roles during his tenure with the department, including patrol officer, patrol officer in charge, detective, sergeant watch commander of investigations, deputy chief of administration, and finally, deputy chief of operations. He also served as a member of the Kane County Major Crimes Task Force, and later as the task force commander overseeing the operations of that unit. Eric has received numerous awards and commendations throughout his career. He was the recipient of the department's Officer of the Year Award in 2009. He was also recognized by the Federal Bureau of Investigation for the outstanding assistance and leadership he provided in a joint investigative effort during a multi-jurisdictional domestic terrorist investigation. Eric is a graduate of Western Illinois University, he has a degree in law enforcement studies, and he also attended Northwestern University School of Police Staff and Command in 2017. We're very proud that Eric will assume the position of the Chief of Police of the Batavia Police Department on January 14th, 2025.
Eric, you want to come forward?
Join with your family?
Yeah, if you'd like to have your family, what we'd like, I think, to do is have you come up and stand in the circle here, so we're going to get you on the TV camera. So if you come up here.
Need a microphone.
Right behind you.
Thank you.
As the mayor, I would just like to say how pleased I am that we have such a highly qualified candidate within the ranks of the Batavia Police Department, that it was a very easy decision to make to promote you to the position of Chief of Police. So thank you for this career that you've already given us, and we look forward to another part of your career, which is, I'm sure, going to be as challenging and as successful as you've had. So Batavia's a lucky place tonight, having you here. So if you would repeat after me, raise your right hand, and state, and then the oath of office reads. I instate your name.
I, Eric Blowers.
Having been appointed?
Having been appointed.
To the position of Chief of Police?
To the position of Chief of Police.
On January 6th, 2025?
On January 6th, 2025.
Effective January 14th, 2025?
Effective January 14th, 2025.
With the Batavia Police Department?
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the City of Batavia?
In the City of Batavia.
And the Counties of Kane and DuPage?
And the Counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties?
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Chief of Police?
Chief of Police.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, you're a boy.
Thank you.
I got to get you something, you just have to sign off, so.
So I just want to make a couple of quick words, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for being here. I can't believe sometimes how truly fortunate I've been that my chosen career landed me in a city like Batavia. It's the people of Batavia that really make this community special, and I'm just excited for the opportunity to continue to serve in this new role. I also want to, you know, recognize just how special I think the Batavia Police Department is, and it's all thanks and due to the men and women of the Batavia Police Department who serve with pride and integrity each and every day. So thank you all, thank you, everyone in here, for the service that you give to the community. I truly appreciate it and recognize just how special this department is, and it's you guys that make it special and are deserving of that praise. I also just want to say thank you to a couple of people. There's been a lot of people over the course of my career that have really had a serious impact on me, way more than I could probably name, but former Chief Yule was actually my first supervisor when I was hired on the department here, which was a little scary at times, but it was also just a really great experience, he was a role model for me, someone that I've really looked up to, and I had an opportunity to work closely with him when he was the Chief of Police as well.
to work closely with him when he was the chief of police as well, and I just appreciate all of the support and guidance that he's given me over the years. Of course, Chief Maza, going to miss you. Chief Maza's been, you know, as you mentioned, just a huge advocate for building the police department's relationship with the community, something I plan to continue. And, you know, he's just been, you know, a visionary leader and a steady hand for the police department, and I'm forever grateful for the assistance and support that you've given me over the years and definitely going to miss you. Keep your phone handy, please. Also, I just want to thank my family for their unwavering support as well. This can be a challenging career at times, as Chief Maza mentioned, and, you know, their continued support has really helped me feel comfortable taking this next step in my career. And lastly, just Mayor Laura, city council, thank you for the opportunity to serve in this new role. I appreciate the trust that you've placed in me to lead this department, and I promise that I will continue to do everything within my power to make sure that the Batavia Police Department remains a good community partner and that we continue to treat the citizens with the respect and dignity that they deserve. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to join me for our next promotion?
Deputy Chief. I have my chair here.
So Chief Blowers was promoted from the position of deputy chief of operations, which left a vacancy, which will now be filled by Detective Sergeant, sorry, Detective Sergeant. I've gotten used to calling you Deputy Chief already, that's all. Detective Sergeant Gary LaBarbara. Gary LaBarbara has been with the Batavia Police Department for 20 years. He also is a member of our armed forces, having served active tours of duty in Bosnia and later in Afghanistan and Uzbekistan as an infantry soldier in the U.S. Army. Since joining the Batavia Police Department, Gary has also served in a variety of roles, including police patrol officer, juvenile detective, field training officer, patrol officer in charge sergeant, and most recently detective sergeant. Gary has received numerous awards and commendations throughout his career with the Batavia Police Department. He was selected as the police department's Officer of the Year in 2010, and in 2015, Gary received the police department's Life Saving Award for his efforts rendering first aid to an unresponsive person. Gary is a graduate of Harper College with an associate's degree in arts. He recently graduated from the Northwestern University School of Police Staff in Command in May of 2024, and we are very proud to announce Gary's appointment to the position of deputy chief, which will be effective on January 14. Please join me, Gary.
Need a motion on this, or?
No.
No?
There. She's like.
All right, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. Line up. I instate your name.
I, Gary LaBarbara.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the position of deputy chief.
Been appointed to the position of deputy chief.
On January 6, 2025.
On January 6, 2025.
Effective January 14, 2025.
Effective January 14, 2025.
With the Batavia Police Department.
With the Batavia Police Department.
In the city of Batavia.
In the city of Batavia.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
And the counties of Kane and DuPage.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of deputy chief.
Of deputy chief.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm just going to give a few comments. I want to keep it very brief. I just wanted to thank the city of Batavia. I've been here 20 years. I love this city. I love working for the police department. The last three years as a detective sergeant, I've been able to work a lot more closely with the city administration, and as Chief Blowers had mentioned, you know, there are partners that help make the city great, and I really appreciate it. I look forward to, you know, continuing and achieving the chief's vision of keeping this police department great. It's super professional. The guys and girls that we have working for this police department are awesome. I want to thank my wife, Whitney. Being a police officer spouse is not an easy thing to do. Sometimes, you know, you're getting ready for dinner and you get a call out, you have to go into work. Sometimes you're missing holidays. Sometimes you're unwrapping presents on Christmas, and then you got to go into work, and she's been with me the whole time and very supportive. I want to say thank you to all the leaders that I've had at the police department, Deputy Chief Blowers, Chief Blowers, Chief Maza, a lot of other great leaders here, and the investigators and officers that I work with. I just really, really appreciate it. I promise I'm going to leave this place better than I found it. Thank you.
Now we're going to ask the Batavia Chamber of Commerce to come forward and give us their regular report. Margaret Perro, the executive director and president is here, so Margaret.
Thank you, Mayor. That was fun. That was exciting. We had our exercise. Congratulations. We'll miss you, Sean, but we're so looking forward to the new positions. We're so lucky in our town, always. Happy New Year, everyone. Thank you for having me here this evening. I want to start out by saying thank you for everyone who shopped during the holiday season. Every unique purchase you made and every restaurant you visited was, really helped our local businesses. I am thrilled to announce that we sold $20,000, $20,120 in Chamber bucks this year and also donated an additional $5,000 from the Batavia Chamber. So we injected into the local academy $25,120 this past year. We're thrilled to do it, and we'll continue to offer those throughout the year. Chamber bucks never expire. I would also like to thank all who attended the Batavian Women in Business Luncheon that we held in December. We featured, we did fundraising for the Batavia United Way and the Batavia Toy Access Drive and raised $3,210 in cash and gift cards, and we also collected toys for the toy drive. So that was wonderful. On your desks in front of you, I have given you all our brand-new Batavia Chamber Community Guide and Business Directory. It hasn't even hit the houses yet, so this is hot off the press, just arrived today, and I wanted to give you guys your own copies. I also have given you a calendar of the Chamber events for 2025. As you can see, we have a very busy schedule, lots going on. We add events throughout the year, too, so add these to your calendar, but also follow us on Facebook and subscribe to our weekly digest newsletter so you know what's going on. On the reverse side, we have our, at a glance, what we have accomplished, some of the things we've accomplished in 2025. We had 34 ribbon cuttings this past year, so that's a, that's a great, great number. Fun ceremony celebrating those businesses. We grew by 77 members. We have seven referral groups that are active and busy and supporting business growth in the community, along with a lot of other great statistics you'll see on that sheet. I just wanted to share that with you. I want you to mark on your calendar our Inspire Celebration. I mentioned last month that Bob Hubbard won our Citizen of the Year. He's a wonderful Batavian, and we're so excited to be able to honor him. We also have awarded the Batavia Main Street as a Spirit of Batavia Award winner, and the Batavia Peace Initiative is being honored with the Batavia Impact Award. Businesses that have made a great investment in their businesses will be honored with OLE Awards. Those will be selected and announced soon, so pay attention to that. That exciting news is coming up. Check our website for more details. I want to remind you that if you know a high school senior this year at Batavia High School, have them go to our website for our Inspire scholarships. The Chamber again this year will be awarding four $1,000 scholarships. We're always happy to support the Batavia public schools in any way we can. I want to extend a warm welcome to the businesses that joined the Chamber this past month in December. We're delighted to welcome the following organizations: Reliable Auto Repair, NXT Nutrition and More, Brenson Advisory, and Valley's Valley Education for Employment System. They're now valued members of the Chamber. Check our website for additional information, and you could check our community guide, too. In the community guide, do note that it's got great city information in there, too, and our civic organization partners are highlighted. So it's a very useful resource for residents throughout the year. I want to announce that our Coffee and Commerce will be at BMO Harris this Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. On Tuesday, January 9th, it's Thursday, Thursday, January 9th, we have a ribbon cutting for NXT Nutrition and More, just right down the street here. Saturday, no, I'm sorry, I have the dates wrong on here, January 13th is our, Wednesday, January 13th is our networking at Portillo's. That'll be a good one. Come join us. We'll have chocolate cake, of course. And Monday, January 27th, is our new Young Entrepreneur Professional Group. We're doing a bowling event at Funway that will be at 5:00 p.m. Thank you for that. Do you have any questions for me before I introduce my guest? Okay. I do want to play a video. This is the OLE video for Sturdy Shelter. Sturdy Shelter is my guest this evening. You'll recognize Oliver Bulley, Frank and Diane Mercadante.
I'm Diane.
And I'm Frank.
Welcome to Sturdy Shelter.
Our mission here is to create a treasured and genial space, one person, one conversation, and one highly crafted beer at a time.
The most amazing part of this space is the fact that our logo was designed seven years before we found this building. We're super excited, too, about the history of the building, the fact that it's been a community space since the 1800s, that it hosted the Music Hall, it hosted the Opera House, it's had four different movie theaters here, and so to bring it back to the community, to be able to have people really enjoy this beautiful building, has really been, you know, just so much fun. Glover Architects and Engineers had a lot of glass for their offices, which we were able to repurpose around the brew house. We have some barn wood that is from the 1800s that we repurposed. The steps are all made from around the same time period, too.
Being the name Sturdy Shelter was important, that we had a bit of a sturdy look, the cedar timber wood that surrounds the brew house. So we wanted to give that impression, this is a sturdy place, this is a refuge, this is a place that will support you during maybe the storms of life, and we feel that the architecture really communicates that.
We just want to thank the Batavia Chamber of Commerce for giving us this OLE Award. We are just so happy to be in Batavia, and we are just really thrilled to be a part of your community.
That's great. Great video made by Andrew Schoens at Both End Pictures. I want to welcome up Oliver, Frank, and Diane. Give them a warm welcome. They have a beautiful space and a wonderful business.
Well, thank you for having us here this evening. Thank you so much. My name is Oliver Bulley. I am the general manager at Sturdy Shelter Brewing and one of the partners, along with Frank and Diane Mercadante. Frank Mercadante is the head brewer at Sturdy Shelter, and Diane leads our marketing team and is also responsible for the amazing aesthetic that you see at the brewery. So if you have any questions about that, you should ask her, because this is awesome. Looks amazing. So thank you very much for having us here tonight. Thank you to Margaret Perro for inviting us tonight. Thank you so much, Margaret, and all you do for the Chamber and for the city of Batavia. Thank you very much. Thank you as well to the aldermen here, Abby, Dustin, Jenny, Leah, Mark, Nick, Sarah, and the rest, ones of you I don't know yet. One of these days, we'll, Mike gets to know you, that'd be great. And to the city staff as well. So Laura, I know you, and then we heard from Sean today. Congratulations, Sean. So that's very exciting. And to Mayor Schelke. We've been looking forward to presenting today and sharing with you the excitement that's happening in Batavia's fifth ward. I was very excited. So thank you for the past support that got us here, the build out, during our build-out phase with TIF grants, support on all of our endeavors, and the patronage, so many of you and the council and the community has shown us as a whole. We got Mike over there. Thank you, Mike. Couldn't do it without you. Yeah. Our hope from the beginning has been to be a welcoming place, bustling with hospitality and connection, a place where the community can gather and satisfy their thirst for a wide variety of beer styles, and exceptional offerings, both alcoholic or non-alcoholic, but more importantly is to address the deeper human thirst for belonging, connection, and genuine community. Our mission, like I said in the video, is to build a treasured and genial community, one person, one conversation, and one highly crafted beer at a time. We've seen that happen these past two years through our beer, our partnerships, and the people who have supported us. We won a bronze medal in the World Beer Cup this past year for our dark lager, Wilson Street Munich-Style Dunkle. So now Wilson Street is famous worldwide for its beer, not its traffic. We've received awards from both the Chamber of Commerce and the Batavia Main Street for our building and our unique events. We've partnered with local schools, Batavia businesses. We've been able to partner with Aldi the last two years to raise money for Alex's Lemonade Stand, the Park District with Windmill City Fest, Batavia United Way for Dinner Table, and we make it a point to support other businesses in Batavia at every opportunity that we have. We also constructed a take-what-you-need food pantry outside of our building. Gets a lot of use. We appreciate the ability to work with the city. We appreciate the city rebuilding the retaining wall right outside, right behind our building, which gives us an opportunity to continue our expansions. We want to accomplish great things this year. We are eager to begin build-out on a new deck that we think will be the jewel of the Fox River, an outdoor space that advertises itself as folks drive across the bridge on Wilson Street or walk, bike, and run along the Fox River Trail. We want to explore the opportunity to add solar to our building with our incredible south-facing roof. We think we can utilize a natural clean resource in the city of energy. We've experienced amazing growth the last two years, and with that growth has come challenges, including the challenge of parking. We look forward to working with the city to meet those challenges with the increased number of people coming to downtown Batavia. Sturdy Shelter has become a community hub in the past two-plus years. We've connected with the citizens of Batavia, of Fox Valley, and we've connected these people to each other. What we see is that these people come together over and over again, and Sturdy Shelter has been a gathering spot for these relationships. Sturdy Shelter is a gathering place for weddings, rehearsal dinners, celebrations of life, graduations, birthday parties, retirement parties. We are a destination for our weekly events. People want to hold their organizational gatherings at our brewery. Tonight, we're hosting Belong Fox Valley's monthly gathering, Cheers Queers, which we've hosted many times and is a group that is dear to our hearts. We are excited for the new things this year holds and invite you to join us at the brewery at 10 South Shumway Avenue here in Batavia. Let us know how we can continue to be good community.
that was kind of sitting there, kind of falling apart as it sat there, and you've turned it into something that has really become a point of great interest and destination for a lot of nice people to move in, to not move, but to come to Batavia and enjoy the hospitality and the refreshments that you offer up. So, you're doing a great job, and please continue on.
Thank you so much. That's very kind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't leave. We gotta, I need to talk to you guys about downtown interest.
Yeah.
With your deck.
Oh, yeah. The deck's gonna be amazing, and it's gonna be so fun.
You'll be seeing us again.
Yeah. Cool. Thank you.
Administrator's report.
Well, I just want to say about Sturdy Shelter Brewing, I can remember when Frank contacted Anthony and I five years ago, five years ago, and he came in and he said, I've got this idea for a place, and I've got the name. It's Sturdy Shelter, and it comes from a Bible passage that says, "A faithful friend is a sturdy shelter. Whoever finds one has a treasure." And really, this business is such a treasure in our community, and I absolutely love the, you know, where that came from in your heart, Frank and Diane, and Oliver, too, and it really is a special place. Congratulations on your success and looking forward to even more bright future for all of you.
Wanted to, that project that they were talking about, we're doing some riverbank stabilization that is occurring right behind the business there. It's kind of a continuation of a project that we have. We want to protect some of the infrastructure that we have over there. We've got some utilities that are there, and the riverbank stabilization makes sure that those are protected in the future. And we wanted to get that done before they built their lovely deck, because we don't want there to be any disruption once that deck is in place. Also wanted to highlight, and we're gonna have some presentation materials here at City Hall shortly, that talk about the fact that the City of Batavia has become a salt-smart community. It was part of our initiatives that are part of the Greenest Region Compact. And what that means is that the city has received a certification based on the policies and practices that it has put in place to make sure that it's very conservative about its use of salt, so that, you know, we don't introduce those chemicals into the water supply and all of the other harm that can come to the natural environment from the overuse of salt. Just a statistic to put out there, the City of Batavia maintains 117 miles of road. So, while we are only a 10-square-mile community, there are a lot of miles of road that make that up. And also, just a reminder, that any time that there is going to be two inches of snow, there's no parking on city streets either before, I'm sorry, either during or after that snow event until the streets have been cleared. Also wanted to share with you some good news. The City of Batavia has recently received some awards that I would like to highlight. And the first is that the Kane County hosts an annual planning meeting, and at that, our downtown plan received Plan of the Year. So, Scott, congratulations to your department and to everyone who was involved, because that really was a community effort in gathering all of the input that it took to create that plan, and we look forward to working with everybody to see its fruition here. And then also, as part of that meeting, Phil Bus, who is a member of our Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals, he received an award from them as well for his 50 years of service in Kane County in general, in various roles that he has had towards planning the communities in all of Kane County. So, we're really proud to have him as a member of our Plan Commission. And then also, in Public Works, the local APWA chapter selected our Prairie and Wilson Street project as their Transportation Project of the Year for projects less than $5 million. So, I think that deserves another round of applause, because that was a reflection of hard work and a lot of collaboration with other organizations. There were, just all the departments within Public Works were involved in that, and it gives us the opportunity, then, to submit that project to the regional chapter. And so, we recently submitted that to the regional chapter. So, that is my administrator's report, unless anybody has any questions.
Questions? All good stuff.
All good stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have other business from the council? Anybody want to bring anything up? And very briefly, under the mayor's report, I just kind of want to piggyback on what Laura has just shared with you. You know, I've been here all my life, and so, most people who've grown up here know who I am or know me. I had a gal show up in the office last week who was here because she was visiting her family, or distant family at Christmas time. She hadn't been in Batavia in 58 years, and she comes in and she says to me, I'm blown away by what I see in this town. This didn't used to be like this down here. This was the old factory buildings when I was in school going on, and about the only thing that was positive was they put our ice skating picture on the front cover of the Saturday Evening Post. And she says, beyond that, I never would have dreamt that Batavia would have all these neat things, all these restaurants, all these new businesses, all these new buildings. The library is just super-duper. You know, I would have never guessed that we could have done all this. And she says, all those involved in this should be very pleased of themselves, because she didn't, she told me what town she was from, but I don't want to name it, but she says, we're backwards in comparison to Batavia. We can't get anything done. We're always fighting about something, and we don't do anything. And she says, I just remember so well so many neat little things about Batavia, but she says, you've exemplified them like I can't believe. And about the time she says this to me, in comes our police dog walking. She tours the building every now and then with somebody from the Police Department. And so, they come down the hall, and she says, what is this? And I said, well, that's the river. She's on the Police Department staff. And she says, well, I can remember back when the Dalmatian dogs were on the fire truck. And I said, yeah, well, we don't have those anymore, but we kept the dog thing alive, and we got a new way of doing it with dogs. And so, she says, that's just another sparkle for Batavia, that you do all these good things, and you're really making Batavia someplace that I can go back. I guess she lives in California. She said, I can go back and brag about the town I grew up in. And she says, I go to meetings at my country club and whatever with other people, and they're all telling me what a phony place they lived in or grew up in. And she says, I'm gonna be able to say, I grew up in a wonderful place that has just constantly improved itself over and over again since I lived there. So, just wanted to share that story with you, that some of the things you're doing here are really making a very positive impact on people, and those who can remember how it used to be are blown away by the positivity that you see coming out of Batavia. And I said, well, we're very fortunate. We have a great city council. They're all here to do what's in the best interest of Batavia, and certainly the other taxing bodies, the Park District, the School District, and certainly the library with the new library, that she was a big promoter of all those ideas. So, I wanted to end, you know, the meeting with a message to you that some of the things we're doing here, you're doing right, and you're getting some outside opinions that are very positive about what Batavia's doing. So, you all should be kind of proud of, pleased with yourself that that's all what's happening. So, with that, I will adjourn, or close, and I guess I will entertain a motion for adjournment?
Motion second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.